Okay.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order at 7:04 if everyone completes their pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do a quick roll call, Mayor Mojer is president, Trustee Lefimer.
President.
Trustee Crawford.
Here.
Trustee Wolf.
Here.
And Trustee Smith.
Present.
D W Superintendent Wolf.
Here.
Treasurer Dusset.
Here.
Attorney France.
Present.
And Clerk Lequid.
Here.
All right, we're all here. First off, I need to make a motion to approve the minutes from all of the meetings in June and our special meeting in July, so we have the regular board meeting on June 8th, the work sessions on June 13th, June 22nd, June 29th, and special meeting on July 26th. Can I have a second, please?
July 6th, I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that the June 13th and June 22nd needed to be relabeled as work session meeting, and June 29th and July 6th needed to be relabeled as special board meetings.
Okay.
So that's different from what was passed out to you.
Okay, so I will make the motion and who will second it?
I'll second it.
Rick, second it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's you, everybody said aye?
Aye.
Yeah? All right, it's unanimous, carried and approved. Let's go right into public comment. All right. Tom, you don't have anything to say?
Just here to observe.
All right, Mr. Booty?
Here.
Did you want to say anything, sir?
I'm a member of the Let's Travel Club.
Okay.
And we've been removed from the Let's Travel Club, saying that we can no longer occupy it, and I'd like an explanation as to why we can't occupy it.
Okay, is that all your questions in regards to the senior citizen building then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Mr. Brecker. So first off, so everybody knows with, what is it, Meals on Wheels, there was an issue with the stove, and they said there was a bunch of issues where they wasn't hooked up properly, so on and so forth. We actually had Mr. Brecker do an inspection on the building, and in the one meeting he went through over it very thoroughly. In the conclusion, it's a sound building. The only thing is that there are some worries or some things that we'll have to do as far as maintenance and upkeep, which we do have money in reserve for the building. The one thing though, before we move forward with the building, is that there might be asbestos in the building. So, we actually, back on the June meeting, the June 8th, the board approved of Mr. Brecker to go ahead and have that building be tested for the asbestos.
Asbestos.
Asbestos, thank you. So, Mr. Brecker, you had a report in regards to the testing that we sent for the lab.
Okay. I didn't send anything into the lab. The lab I spoke to the board about last month is out of business.
Okay.
I went through nineteen labs. I actually found a cheaper lab.
Okay.
In Depew. They will, if I drop off the sample tomorrow, a week from tomorrow, they'll have the results. There may be two tests involved. The first test is a hundred and five dollars. That's the initial test of the tile. If there is glue backing on the tile, they may have to test that. That test is an extra seventy-five dollars. So for a hundred and eighty dollars, we can have a full test. We may not need the second test, which in that case would be a hundred and five dollars. They demand payment with credit card. I spoke to Rose. The board doesn't have a credit card, but I would like the board approval. If I paid for this with my credit card, could I turn in a voucher for that payment?
Okay.
Now, if this is approved, and I run up tomorrow with this sample, a week from tomorrow we'll have the results, and we'll know where we stand on that building.
The results take one week, is all. Okay, so first off, then, I'll make the motion to authorize Mr. Brecker to use his credit card to make the payment for the testing, and of course, the village will reimburse. Do I have a second?
I'll start.
Did you get that, Rose?
Jason?
Yep.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous, carried and approved. Is there any way that we're able to get a credit card to the village so that somebody doesn't have to put up their own personal funds for something like this?
In the past, they've always recommended not because, who are you going to authorize this, signers? You've got clerk, you've got forecous fee, you've got a mayor.
So it'd just be the same as a signatory for the chaps?
In the past, they've recommended not to have one. That's the board.
Can we do a, like prepaid for this?
I, most places will take vouchers. I don't know why this place doesn't. You want to make for a municipality.
I explained to them that it's for a municipality, but they said, no, they need a credit card.
Okay. Well, going forward, that's something that we'll discuss down the road in regards to being able to have a credit card in case if something like this comes up that we're able to make a payment, so that's not a big problem.
Rose, they'll give me a tax voucher.
Okay.
In case this was approved to those.
Yep.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I have a question. On the floor tile, is there some of the floor tile up, or is it all, is it adhered to the floor?
It's mostly adhered to the floor. There are a few loose ones. We took one of the loose ones, so we didn't damage the rest of the floor.
Okay. Where's the other problem with the asbestos? Just the floor?
Just the floor.
Well, it's brought to my knowledge that if, if those tiles are down on the floor, the, there should not be an issue with any asbestos until you start ripping the floor out, and then you've got a problem with the asbestos.
No, I can, I've done asbestos work. Just walking on it can disturb it, it becomes airborne, and that's what, that's what they're worried about, is the fibers that are airborne getting around, and you can breathe those in, and that's for things like asbestos.
Only way to get around that is to cover.
Yeah.
And cover it. Cover it with the rubber. To make sure of it.
Right, right, there's that whole, what is it, green carpet.
Yeah, but not in the kitchen areas.
Right, yeah.
In the hallway. In the jons.
Because we've been there for forty-four years, you know? And, and as far as the ovens, we don't use the ovens at all. We bring our own food in, have a meal there, and have a meeting, and leave. As far as the stove goes.
And what was the issue with the stove? Because it wasn't...
Couldn't keep the pilots lit, so the gas company shut them off. I think the stove needs to be cleaned.
They said one of the mines was too small.
That's right.
Yeah.
Oh, I have to buy it. There are a few things, but I mean, the village has, what is, ninety-nine hundred dollars? It was good for that building.
Yeah, it has some money, yes.
I was going to say, as far as the stoves go, if we still could have our meetings there, we don't need to use that stove at all.
Is there, Gary, is there a health concern if these folks were meeting there for that meeting, for their Let's Travel?
From there, an hour and a half, twice as long.
I wouldn't say there's immediate health concern. I would certainly say that the floor tiles should be addressed either by covering them or removing them, and if we remove them, it's going to be an immense, costly situation.
Oh, yes, yeah, we just did that at our church, and you're talking thousands of dollars.
Yeah.
But we could put something in cheap carpet, or indoor carpet, and completely put over it, or what, what could we do with that?
I would have to talk to an environmental engineer on what would be satisfactory with that.
That's just a question, you know? We don't know unless we ask.
When is, when is your focus on next meeting?
Monday.
A week from tonight.
First and third Monday night.
Yeah. It's the first and third Mondays of each month.
We should have an answer by then.
It's not the only issue you mean, though. What's that? It's not the only. Come on.
Is, since I get the trips together and so forth, I need access to the building, because we gather there to get on the tour buses.
Okay.
And we unload there, which is very convenient. And when we do trips, it's, we're seniors, they need to use the bathrooms. Some come in from around, surrounded in the audience. And to get on the tour bus and use their bathroom, especially if you're going to Tennessee, and we're fixing that in Tennessee in September.
It's always neat, is when we, before we leave, or when we come back, we would like to be able to use, at least let some people use the restroom if they needed to.
Okay.
That, you know, it's not going in.
Do you see an issue then, if that, we sent, say, like, John to go and cover the floor in the kitchen up for the time being until we receive test back, so that they can have their meetings and continue to operate, since they're not using the kitchen?
I don't see a problem, and I think the only reason that county inspector made an issue out of this was to cover the counties, but they placed the, the oldest on the village.
Okay. So does anybody have any reservations then with allowing the Let's Travel Club meet at the senior citizen building like they regularly would? As long as John, if you could tomorrow, go ahead and cover that floor up so that...
You have to get...
Are you saying we're not going to do the test?
No, we're still doing the test, but just so that they can continue to operate, because they're not going to use the kitchen, they're not going to, shouldn't disturb the asbestos.
Yep.
If, and that's an F.
We'll call with that.
We've been in there for forty-seven years with asbestos.
I think if common sense prevails, we'll be okay.
Rose, are we going to make a motion for that?
It's been a couple, a couple years since I've done it.
Okay.
The thing we always did, anytime we did asbestos work.
All right, so I'm going to make a motion then, that will allow the Let's Travel Club continue to operate like they regularly would and utilize the senior citizen building, that John's going to cover up the flooring, and of course, we're still going to get the tests. If there becomes any issue, just as a side note, if there is an issue with the asbestos or anything, we will contact you. Who do you want me to contact? Who's the ringleader?
Brenda? You were all here.
I will contact you and let you know if there is an issue, so that you, you ladies are not in harm's way, okay?
Okay. We appreciate that, but it's just, it's so convenient. We're trying to meet in the bottom of Robert's Memorial right now, and you have to go down a large flight of stairs, and you see what we have.
Absolutely.
I'm not trying to be smart, but you see what we have.
No, absolutely.
Very difficult, you know? We sure would appreciate it.
All right.
Oh, boy, I might not be able to live as long as you.
All solutions, okay?
But I want to ask a quite practical question about it. If you go to the expense of carpeting, and then it still says no way to tear it up, how much is that going to pay the village out, I mean, for a week? Is that practical?
Well, if you cover it, if you cover it satisfactorily, you don't ever have to tear it up.
What if they say no you have to, or you send us? Well, let's, let's do the testing, and if they let us go in for right now until we hear a word, then maybe we can make a decision.
Correct.
And, and we'll see how our finances are, maybe we could talk a little bit. We just would like to read that, that's all. It's, it's something that our elderly people look forward to for an hour and a half.
I would just tell them, John, that usually when we do it, you have to use a heavy plastic, she's going to get some, and then put that down the foot. So when you guys do go there, it'll be, you know, all the areas will be covered in plastic. So if you do have to use the restroom, whatever, just be careful, because there'll be a plastic down. That's what they use when they do any kind of abatement work on it.
That's fair enough.
It's supposed to help keep it from becoming airborne.
Okay.
And then once we find out what we've got to do, if we have to do it.
Appreciate it, that's fair enough, that's all we ask.
Yeah. Can I have a second for somebody to go up to authorize this Let's Travel Club? Rick's going to second that motion? And then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, carried and approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Well, I don't want, don't want you guys to think like we were just letting it go, or we were putting guys to the curb. We just want to make sure that you guys are in, not in harm's way. Because there were rumors saying that it's an unsound building, that you could put a pencil through it and all this, and so Mr. Brecker went through and did an inspection on it, and I was quite happy with it, and hopefully, we can reserve the building and it won't be an issue down the road.
Oh, good. How about Meals on Wheels, are they going to be able to go in there?
As far as I know, Meals on Wheels now has done a contract with Robert's Memorial.
Oh, okay.
If we spend the money to get the, you know, like, to get the oven fixed and all that, I mean, if it's worth it, I mean, because we get roughly, what is it, three thousand?
Eight seventy.
Eight seventy. We get from the county on that, so if it's affordable to do such, then we will.
Okay.
Because I know already, people that do the Meal on Wheels are saying that they're having a heck of a time going down with the stuff like they were just saying, where you guys are meeting at Robert's.
And the disturbs are, I'm, I'm not saying, I'm not being mean, but like, if we go to a funeral, we can't go, we can't, we can't get into our own facility to put a meal on, because they're in there till one o'clock in the afternoon.
Absolutely.
And I know they're still looking. I was told that the county is still looking for them up, up another place, and we suggested a couple things, so maybe something else will come up for them.
Well, and even if so, if we're able to get it fixed up and get it working again, I mean, then that...
Absolutely.
You know, we can keep it in good repair and all of that. I know they were saying, Mr. Brecker went over a bunch of stuff that we could go over to look at and see what we can do, and like, already mentioned, we do have money in reserves for it, so...
Well, we can't ask for anymore, and we appreciate your time.
Not a problem.
Thank you for all coming up.
Yes, very much. And I'm sorry that you guys felt like we were abandoning or...
Well, no, we just didn't know what was going on.
We didn't notice on the door anything.
We didn't, yeah. Well, we didn't, we didn't get any notice, you know, or anything, we just...
Well, that's, I apologize for that.
That's okay, so we came to the source.
Well, we appreciate it. Is there anybody else here that's in attendance that would like to say anything or wanted to speak? Was everybody here just for the Let's Travel Club?
Just for, just for. To let you know we're here.
We see.
All you ladies are here, and I see one gentleman.
Two, two.
Tell me after.
Are you willing to? No?
They both look very tired.
Well, a lot of us are widows. Yeah. I guess that's my buddy along. She's scorched, and she still had it.
All right, so...
We need to approve the master garden.
Um... Did we already make a, didn't we do a motion for the...
You approved, you approved reimbursement of expenses for...
Yes.
Are you going up there for something else, Gary, or are you going all the way up there just for this?
Just for this.
So he should be able to turn that in up.
Yes.
Yep. So just track your mileage and turn that in. All righty. If you guys want to stay, we encourage you to stay if you don't want to, if you're able to go if you want, it's up to you.
I was calling, but they told me I had to. I guess you're in.
You're welcome.
I'm joining us, but I'm good meals.
If you want, you're proud for it. If Bo is involved, I'm there.
It's got to be tore up, because it's got to be under construction, create a lot of dust. And then they have an air monitoring company that goes in and monitors. So the...
When I hit sixty-eight, I got on a prodigal, started coming backwards, so really, right now, I'm fifty, and a few more years, I'll probably be drafted. My voice will change in another thirty-five years.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Gary. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
That's not a senior building, that's a sorority house.
What was that remark?
All right, so that will close the public comic, or comic, public comic period.
Did you, did, did you ask Mr. Boxford?
Oh, Bob, did you have anything to add?
Just observing.
Just observing, huh? All right, sir. All right, so that does conclude. So let's go right to the reports of officials and committees. Historian, Pat's not here. Youth council, what have we got going on with youth council? Is everything all good with them?
So far.
Yep. It's starting, and everything's up and running, and...
Yep.
Okay.
Well, how am I, am I sticking with the pay her half now, pay her half when she finishes reporting?
I would say that's would be the proper way. Yeah? Is, Jake, can you open the door and see if Jim's ready, or if he wants to go last?
Probably wasn't expecting this meeting.
If you would. Planning and zoning.
Go to the question. Joint planning board, they didn't meet this month, nobody showed up, so no new news from them.
We did have a resignation.
Yeah, that's in correspondence. Is that for, is that for planning, or is that for zoning?
That zoning board.
Zoning board?
Mm-hmm. So we'll need a new village representative.
All right, so I'll reach out to see if somebody is willing for that position. Does anybody know, is there anybody that would be, that has knowledge in zoning and would have any interest by chance? That you can think off the top of your head?
He's working on a report.
Okay.
About fifteen minutes.
Okay. I can't, I mean, I'll go off...
Do we have any, who we, I can't think of anyone.
No. So I'll just reach out to people and see if there's anybody that expresses interest or that is interested, and even if they want to contact me and let me know they're interested, better work as well. Mr. Brecker, you're up.
Again?
Again. Your report, sir.
All right. I gave you the report on the asbestos.
Yep.
You're interested in the house that's to be demolished and up there in the corner of Main and...
Front seat.
Yeah.
Okay. That demolition permit has expired.
Okay.
So I have to issue a new one. I can't issue a new one. I talked to the contractor, and he said he hasn't got the asbestos report back yet. I need an asbestos report from him. I need insurance information from him. We need John to go and shut off the utilities, and then I can issue another permit. And he's anxious to get at it. The permit's good for six months. You should have it done in four weeks at least, at the most.
So it should be done by fall, right?
Yeah.
And you said you needed an asbestos report, what else?
His insurance. And the public works department to shut off the water, and we've got to make sure the electricity's shut off. I understand it's been vacant there for like thirty years, so electricity's probably shut off, but we want to be sure. John told me today that the sewage is private, so we're not going to worry about that.
And the water, has that been shut off, or do we need to...
I believe the water's off, but I want to, I want to go through the yard to get it cut off, so I want to pay tug on it, they don't pull it off for me.
Okay. All right, and anything else?
I've only issued two building permits so far, and they're, they're both in the works.
Okay.
So that's all I have.
That's all you have? Does anybody have anything for Mr. Brecker? I don't. You're going to go, sir.
I'll join the sorority.
There you go. I think this is the shortest meeting you've ever been to.
Yes, it is.
Thank you, everybody. You're welcome. John, John, John.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so first off, do we want to do the bids first, or do you want to do your report first?
We want to do the bid, to get it over done.
All right, so this is the bid for the sidewalks. I don't need a motion to open them, right? I just can go ahead and open it. You know what, people probably just hopped it, I really think it would. First one is from Seneca Construction Services. They're what? They're out of Salamanca. They're saying all the sidewalk that we want done, which would be, John, I'm going to pass this over to you to see if there's any issue with it. They're saying eighteen thousand. So four hundred and fifty length of feet, five foot wide, will be completed for eighteen thousand. All right, so that's one, is eighteen?
It's all going to be eighteen thousand? They were supposed to provide the linear feet for that amount of money.
Oh, okay.
And we'll need to keep the envelopes and all that stuff on the bids.
The bids were reversed.
Okay. Next one is Countryside Landscape Borders. Oh, wow. Six hundred and fifty-five feet by five foot wide for the eighteen thousand dollars.
Six hundred and fifty?
Five.
In the construction?
Four hundred and fifty.
A lot of extra feet.
By five.
Yep. It's all by five, that's all the sidewalks. That was countryside. And then the last one is Two Cousins Contracting, now LC, out of Portville. They're giving four hundred and fifty feet length by five foot wide for eighteen thousand. So then, the most advantageous one for the village would be Countryside Landscape. So do we need to make a motion to approve their bid? I'll make the motion to accept the bid from Countryland, Countryside Landscape for six hundred and fifty-five feet by five foot wide. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Rick, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, carried and approved. And I assume, John, you'll get in contact with them?
Yes, sir.
Get that going?
Yes, sir.
Awesome, awesome. All right, let's hear what you got, sir.
Well, we got a gip ceiling done, we've got some blind top done. We've been trimming some brush around the villages, we've been cleaning tops off catch basins and bowling roads, and we've washed the rain twice that, too. I had to fix the driveway on Second Street because it washed out so bad, I just, you know, I realized it's their own driveway, but it's, it's, okay, catch basin issue, it is, you know, you walk morning, you got trenches deep, your driveway, I mean, you, you know, we just, it did, we just used what we still had. Looking around, you know, looking at a few other projects, and, you know, some other outs and ends. Water, we've been, that's been getting, you know, the rest of the rookie work done there. I do believe that all our, our reports are done, and our other products, to my knowledge, the report from the DEC, it was due back in March, is in Rose's box, it just has a little bit critique, and that should be on its way tomorrow.
Okay. Did you by chance talk to that gentleman that sent that to us?
Yes, I did. And I said, I will get my, do my best to get it to you by the end of Thursday, Tuesday, and he said, it would be very good if you could.
Did he say if we would be fined or not?
He did not. He was just pleased with the fact it was getting done.
Okay. Would you, do you think it, it was just kind of like their scare tactic to get it in immediately?
Could very well be. I mean, I will, if we, if we email, or whatever we do, I got to tell them, tell, call them and tell them, we can fax it, email, but I got to call them and tell them what's going on, and I can go a little more depth, you know, if he does. I'm sure he's probably just the guy in between, there's probably somebody above him that decides what happens there.
John, are we dealing with the DEC over in Olin, or are we dealing with that in Albany, or...
I believe these guys are all in.
You don't say? Okay.
Same with the sewer. We've been working over there, we've got the old fence tore down, we've gotten some mated stuff over there, we got to go and get the gates finished. Sample's been done, you know, the other work has been getting done around there.
In regards to the water, um, did, is Greg doing the turbidity reports daily?
Yes, we've got all that, we've got a new list of the places where we're going every day, and we get it done.
Okay.
That is being done. And everybody got a copy of this month's sewer.
Yeah.
And this, and this month's water report. So...
I spoke with Jason, and he said that we're going to be, more than likely, going to be receiving violations in regards to the turbidity levels, because those weren't done for however long over the past how many months? It was done for the month of June, and of course, I'd assume that it's going to be done this month and going forward.
It's being done.
But so everybody knows that we're going to try to, from my understanding, we're going to have to send a violation letters to everybody in the village, let them know the situation, everything that's going on. So that would be wonderful. So that'll be wonderful.
I hope it's like everything, something that's happened.
Yeah.
Everybody gets past it, move forward, you're just, you know, we can't, what are you gonna do?
Can't dwell on it.
Um, I started today, today was just kinda one of them days running around, of course, Greg spent a lot of time on the computer getting the reports off and getting our, I've given all the totals off of that today, I said that's most important, get that done today. We got the ones all moving in for the week. Um, I started working on standard operating procedures for the water, the sewer. Um, it's simple, it, I mean, you can go into great depth, but basically, it's just the basic stuff that's gotta be done.
Okay.
And what it boils down to is, it's not hard, there isn't anybody sitting in this room right now, putting it on there, opening that door and read that and figure out what they gotta do. Maybe the calibration part of it might be a little tough, but as far as, you know, if, if somebody's had it on, they're mist flooring and get the thing on, it's pretty straightforward. The same with the sewer plan. But that way we ensure everything's being done the same every time. And everybody's on the same page and everybody's doing it the same.
Wonderful. Um, in regards to an email that Gene sent out for the money from FEMA, for those, all the projects, where do we stand on each of them?
We're starting. I've tried to get all my old work done, the gip seal done and some other stuff, I got one, two to replace up on West Hill. And we'll be starting out behind the buildings, tomorrow I gotta meet with the locator guy, cause he's not sure exactly what I want as far as the gas line. And from the looks of the weather, I can start that out there, and I can start my way down, because I can cap it, it isn't like there's any water gonna be running into it. The one up on West Hill, that's a regular everyday drain and there's saying rain tonight, tomorrow, then Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday good, then the weekend, so I don't wanna go up there and open it up and not get it finished. I gotta have probably two days of good weather, maybe three, I wanna have three good days to get that in. Then I'll get this one done, we've got a couple of odds and ends we're gonna do, then we're gonna march up and we're gonna head down Eleven North.
Okay.
I got, I finally got, I was looking at the blue folder today, trying to get exactly what, see what's gotta be done. I did walk it with Jason a couple times, there's a few things I don't exactly remember and I'm looking for the key details in there, I can't remember a couple, some of them we're gonna, pipe size, bigger. I can't remember exactly how much bigger we're going with it, I know a couple of them are like twelve inch, I think we're gonna go like eighteen. I think the one's gonna take, I think we figured out maybe forty or fifty inch, and you know, I think it's gonna be forty-eight inch.
Okay. Um, so, we've got to start Eleven North, which will be the one you'll be working on shortly, you'll be finishing the West Street here, hopefully by the end of this week.
I'll probably start West Street next week, and we'll work out behind the stores.
Oh, you're gonna get behind over there, taking care of it?
I'm gonna get that started, it's like I said, if it rains on me, it ain't gonna hurt, I'm up there, I can't get halfway dug off and have water run down too, just trying to make some place where it can go.
Will we get all these projects done this summer in fall? We will, okay, so I guess it's plenty of time then, cause what we have, a year or so from receiving the funds, I mean.
I really was, wanted to make sure the funds were coming before we went out and spent a lot of money that we didn't have. I don't think it's quite the way it's supposed to be, but, you know, that's what it's working for us right now.
Alright. Do you have anything else to report, including parks and trees by chance?
I've talked to the tree cover, he's been busy, he's supposed to get over here shortly.
Okay.
Um, there's four, I think we got to hear two, three's gotta be taken down to get the sidewalks put in. And there's three people in the village approaching about getting the trees cut down.
In a positive or negative?
In a positive, they want them down, they want them cut, but, um, one of them, yes, I hundred percent agree it should be taken down. The other two, they're not that bad, there's other trees that are pushing.
John, how do we determine, like on trees, people can say they want them down, but, my wife did an inventory and at one point we had nine hundred trees, now we're down under four hundred trees. And are we replacing?
In the village?
Yes, are we replacing trees or are we just cutting them down?
Replacing trees is, well, the last time I think we went, I think we got, um, ten trees. And we were begging to get rid of nine of them. We ended up planting trees over the shop, cause nobody wanted the tree, nobody wants, they don't, you know, hey, we've got a tree down here, you want a tree put in, we can put it here or put it there. The grand theory is put it behind the sidewalk, away from the sidewalks, don't eat the sidewalks, um, but.
The, the problem I see with the trees, I reckon I have always, when we moved here, at this tree line, what we're doing is just creating a subdivision.
It is sad, but when we got trees that, especially going down to the school, that are really, really nasty and there's wood makers up in there, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's like everything else, it's sad to see them go, but.
Well, I understand going, but we should be replacing with something.
Oh, I would agree, you know, there's nothing, what, the, the thing with is, is trying to get, you know, you want a tree?
No.
I do.
Alright. I mean.
Well, and also just to point out, we are on a hill, so any tree to lose helps us shift even more, so you should wanna put it back.
You know, there's different varieties of trees, you know, you start getting into, uh, you know, different types of trees, you get expensive and they, we try to plant, you know, but I can look into pricing and, you know, if we can put in five this year, we'll put in five, you know, if we can five, five people will take. I'd take two down my yard, but I don't want them, cause I don't want them, somebody thinks because I'm DPW superintendent.
Well, no, right where you are, you bought that piece of property right next to it, and that's pretty clear open, so if you want trees.
I mean, I, but, you know.
It's not just your DPW superintendent.
No, but it's, you know, don't give me more reason to talk.
There is that.
Well, you know what, if they have an issue then, by all means come here and we'll talk.
Well, yeah, but it's just simple.
Can you put the tree, John, on the inside of the sidewalk?
Sure.
Okay.
Put it anyplace anybody wants it. Now, I don't know how that turns into liability as a village, cause we planted a tree and say it's over here in the, in the yard, you know, within reason we can get to it without making a big mess. So are we giving this tree to this person and it's their baby? Is that legal, is it right, or is it done or?
Jake?
If it's done on a fair basis, I believe it could be allowed, if it's done individually, you're talking about a gift of public property, public funds, and then it's a problem. So you'd have to have a standard procedure for how the trees are distributed.
Lottery.
You know what?
Well, typically what, you're giving, you're offering trees to people that we just took a tree down from?
Yeah. Or, you know, so that people, you know, that wants a tree or, you know.
Yeah.
If the board wants to specify a particular policy, whether it's lottery or first come, first served, or, uh, to people who are having their trees removed first, you should establish some type of standard.
Can you put that up so that we will?
Also found out too, we planted trees in old spots, they don't work too good either, they don't live.
So do we wanna make a motion then to go ahead and authorize that first off tree, sort of those, I just had the trees taken out? And then, I would say first come, first served, if you want a tree.
That would be a sign up.
Yeah, sign up. Does anybody else have an issue with that? Just so that we can't be critiqued on that?
No, that's pretty fair.
Rick?
For the long line, we need to develop a tree policy, and that we've never had it, and, uh, the, we had people that, I'll give you an example, my previous next door neighbor liked roses. But he had a, a big oak tree that was out by the road and that was cut. So, a hundred year old tree went down so that he could grow roses, and I didn't think that was very valid, and, and, the big open space. And I think that the, one of the things we could look at, and my wife had proposed this years back, is that we could go to a flowering village. There's villages that, who plant a certain type of tree that doesn't grow that high, so you're not bothered by the, by the wires and such. And, and they flower, they become a tourism, attraction, and there's villages in South South where they literally have thousands of trees and such. We, like I said, we had nine hundred when my wife inventoried with Mr. Platch, who, he's the one that did the eternal flame, uh, for Kennedy. And he was quite knowledgeable in such, he'd go through and say what was sick, what, what should be cut.
Biology did you, Mr. Platch?
No, 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 this is a different one, he was an arborist. And, uh, anyway, went through and courtiled every tree to see what, where it was and its history and such. But what we need is to have a unified, uh, program that we can do across the whole village, I think. And, uh, so that it could be a pretty village, rather than one that is, that more trees would take down, and where we realize that some of these houses need paint, use some lighters.
Would you be able to draft up something, uh, by the work session?
I will talk to my, my wife is the tree person, so I will talk to my wife about that.
Can you add that for the agenda for the work session, that, a possible tree policy?
I know I have a tree file in the village filing cabinet, I can check it out and see what's in there.
If you could forward that out to all of us as well?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The thing you have to be careful about with planting the trees is, who's responsible for taking that down eventually? If you start planting on the inside of the sidewalk, then you're gonna say, yours Tacoma, that's not our tree, to take care of it now, and on the outside of the sidewalk, the village is responsible for taking that down, so you have to watch out.
Very true.
Like, like Rick says, have a plan. And of course now, the problem with planting maple trees is they draw up in the wires and they come to the top of the mountain, they look, and then jump down them.
You know, Little Valley's got, I don't know what they are, if you go out of Little Valley towards Salamanca, they've got trees, they've got flowers on them. And I rode through, it was the last weekend, Fourth of July weekend, I believe, and that's all you could smell, I mean, it was nice, you know?
Right.
I don't know how that works with people that, you know, they're allergies, but.
I don't know, it's a variety like it's up here on Jefferson Street, they flower their root for, for, uh, a day, maybe, now they look like a craft, and they're such a sprightly looking home thing, I would love to cut everyone down.
I'm sure you would, you'd like to do a lot of things.
Well, they busted and smashed a lot of stuff, I mean, they hang out there, you try to turn them nice so they look decent, and it's like.
Okay, so then, the trees are gonna take, um, it's not gonna be an easy decision, we have to really do, consider like what Mr. Bosker brought up, as far as where you plant them, and how, who's gonna be responsible for it, all of that, so. We'll discuss that at our next work session, is everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, John?
I've been looking at skidsters for plowing sidewalks.
Yeah, about that.
Okay. I was looking on the computer and I was looking at John here, reading the stats on it, and I swore up and down, I read that it was forty-nine point five inches wide, which is just about five feet. Um, I got a price on it today, the machine's almost six foot wide. Well, I don't know if I was looking at the wrong page or looked at something different, but ballpark price, set up the way we want, it's about fifty thousand dollars.
For the sixty?
For that, I mean, I gotta sit down, I'll go through some more and I'll see what's out there for the widths. There is one, there is one company that I've found so far that doesn't make one four foot wide. But I'm a little wary on how it's gonna be if we got a lot of them. You know, if we gotta push play forward, if it'll be heavy enough and they're gonna, you know, and I will have to inquire into that a little people.
Well, six foot's gonna be, would be out of the question, we're gonna have, we just.
No, no, we gotta see, we can, if, the old skid steer we had was five foot.
Yeah.
That, and you gotta track.
Six inches in there, so.
Yeah, you gotta track about twelve to maybe thirteen inches wide.
Okay.
And it's this long, so the ground pressure is, the, the way the machine is spread over this, and you end up with a, on a four foot sidewalk, you end up with some track in it. And it'll ride, you don't dig and chew, and it'll ride better.
Why don't?
Well, you will to a certain extent, with tires, you're five foot wide, you may have this much tire on, but if you go this way or that way a little bit, and you cut a trough, you start digging in, you're gonna be in there all winter long. I don't care what you do, how you do it, whatever you do, you can wait for it to thaw or freeze up and try to get blowed off, and you still, for some reason, you can't.
Are you able to see if we're, are we able to get snowbore with one as well, or are they just doing pogs?
Well, the, the grand plan is buy the machine and just plow with it, I will keep the snowbore on the, on the Bobcat.
Yeah.
In the roof of the Bobcat, because running the skid steer all around town, you know, if you wanna go, say you wanna go up there to Eleven North and go back by the bear trail, you wanna go over here and do some stuff, you can make it about half the time that Bobcat, half the wear on the tires, since we're a track machine, you know, you're, it's. They're made to go do their thing and they're not made to be ruined for one and on the other on bare pavement and stuff like that. And the Bobcat is a handy piece of equipment to have, but if doing the sidewalks, it's hit or miss.
Are we looking to actually buy or lease?
Well, once we get some final prices and see what's out there for lease, like this, we'll have to make that decision.
How much do we have in the budget? Gene, yeah, your chart is equal to.
Exerver Company got approximately thirty some, thirty thousand I sent out to them. Uh, and the budget itself, under equipment, we have.
I'll just check on state, see if they have.
Okay, tell me too.
Thirty-five thousand, nineteen thousand of that was for tracks or sidewalks.
Wow. Did we, we already spent, or that were allocated?
No.
And so total we have sixty-five thousand, that's in your budget.
Yeah, and the problem dealing with tracks, it picks that machine up and notices that it's eight inches wide.
But when you say sixty-five thousand, they were also talking, but I think, John, you're talking about, do anything with the backhoe?
No, we don't trade that, not until next year.
Okay, cause that was in there for the backhoe also, so backhoe's next year, what about the truck?
Pickup's good until the year after, and we gotta look at something for snow plowing for next budget. We use this truck this year, but next year's budget will be looking.
So we need to start that, what, this winter, right?
Yes, we'll start getting on that, shortly I'll start looking around and, it's nice to build, do things in bits and pieces, you're not sitting at the computer for hours, trying to figure things out, and I can have a little more time, you know.
When do we, uh, order our salt, John?
That is ordered.
Oh, you already ordered it?
It is done, yes, you have to have that done, when did we do that, Rose? May?
Maybe, I'm sorry.
I believe it was May, you have to have it by May.
Well, I just wondered, because I know right now, like, the state is filling everything up because they're getting last year's prices before the price increases.
Yeah, we ordered it already.
Good.
Yep.
So backhoe and plow truck are next year, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is what the tracks on the, on the existing machine look like. As you can see how much higher, you know, it's our machine in there, and it's, it's not, I don't think it'd be a scalable operation on all these places. I mean, there's places where he's having a hard enough time getting through and get wrong corners, not having any height for anything like that. And I think they're probably a high maintenance item. And I've already put, and so it's a bolt and it's in front of that machine already, and I can't, I had to throw us up our tracks and then start peaking them off, so it's gonna do it for on that machine.
Okay.
Okay, um, how much land are we, are we keeping in Kelly Summit? Are we getting rid of some, doing holes at all, playing out?
No, we haven't done anything with Kelly Summit yet, um, there's two options we can do with it. We can either, A, we could sell the land, that, that we don't need that surrounds the springs, or B, which I would be more in favor of, because it would be income every few, well, quite a few years, but would be to harvest the woods. Those are two things that we can discuss to see how do we wanna deal with the land.
Well, the woods been harvested.
Before.
Very, very good.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's off.
Did the Amish clerk that?
Pretty much, I've seen the side of that side hill, I've never seen in my lifetime anything like that. Oh, the reason I'm asking is, the other day at the grand, and we were looking to make a couple improvements up at the strip line. And after talking to a couple people, that's, I'm gonna move the, the pump that we fill our crock, a little over by the crock, and we're gonna put on a switch so it's a little more user friendly, but. But originally we talked of a new roadway going across about in Spring Lots and out into Boninger Road.
Right, part of phase two.
Yes. Well, as I go up there and look at Boninger Road, we ain't really gaining a whole hell of a lot. I mean, it's narrow, it's rough, it's nasty. It's a town road, so.
I thought they were talking about coming down and, and then cutting across, so it'd be more of a, instead of straight up, be more of an angle as you go up and then trying to teeter up that way is what I thought Jake was explaining.
Well, the way I was, I hadn't really got exact, heard exactly what he had in mind, but they were talking about coming up Boninger Road. He'd drive around past the spring, the spring house, instead of coming on three fifty-three and then making it. We could probably save some money if we just, I'm down the hill, I was looking at it the other day, there's two entrances off three fifty-three, just past the one we have. Go through the woods and the clearing come out, you know, we can make it. So we drive up then, and we would just come right across the face of the hill with a nice, easy angle with no turns or no nothing and be done.
Okay.
I think going up and across Boninger Road's gonna be just as much of a problem keeping it open as what we got going now.
Okay.
But something that's gotta be walked and looked at. But I didn't know what the grand plan was, if they were gonna, if the village was planning on putting out, keeping what they need to protect the water and getting rid of the rest of the land and putting back on the tax maps and get going or what?
Well, really, that part hasn't been discussed as far as going forward with phase two. I know Jake's gonna be coming in discussing about the grant work and all that for it. Um, yeah, is it that close? It's supposed to be quick. I don't know what all that's gonna entail, but I would say that that's something that you should definitely talk to him about.
Yeah.
Um, and go over with him. And I know he'll come out immediately, I need to walk it, or.
Yeah.
He's probably just confident enough, who knows exactly what the heck you're talking about. And you can just go ahead and get it, and discuss that and then they can present it. But I would say, regardless of land account, something though, that's something more that we'll need to talk, talk about.
Well, I did realize we ended up with both sides of the road.
The, uh, originally, I went to Jason when I found out that piece of property was available, 'cause I thought it would protect the watershed.
Mm-hmm.
And in the, I was surprised with the county that, that have both sides of the road. And, uh, so the side where the spring is, I think that in my mind, we should definitely keep it to protect the watershed. The section on the other side, that hill is so steep and, and it's eroding and it nearly needs to be replanted because the guy just butchered it. And, uh, has butchered everything as far as I was concerned. And, uh.
Is that a cross from?
Yeah, it's on the Lenko Lakeside. There's a, oh, the Lenko Lakeside. I know there's people over there that would like to buy it, the guy that, uh, there's two people over there that bucks out. And they've expressed interest. And I'm just throwing this out for what it's worth. I'm sure that we have to put it up for public bid and stuff like that. But in my mind, the, I was happy that we got all the acreage, but really it's protecting the spring. And I think that property, and so that you have the latitude of putting a different type of road in and stuff like that and, and have plenty of space, that definitely should be protected.
So how would it work then, with the easement for, with the LHC that we're gonna talk about? How would that work as far as going across? Like, are we able to maintain like an easement between the use, 'cause that part's ours.
Yeah, what, what I would do is, and I'm just saying hypothetically, is that you got the, all the land that's on, on the east side of three fifty-three, around the spring, that can protect. You've got, I think, a wedge between my trail and the road. You should keep that.
Okay.
And, uh, keep the wedge. If you were going to get rid of any property, and to say, if you were gonna get it, it would be property that was west of the railroad bed. And, uh, and I'm just saying hypothetically, but I know that that hill, uh, on the Lenko Lakeside needs to be reseeded because it's, it's eroding into the pond that's, uh, wagners yourself and you see all the earth and that coming down. So there's some issues there.
Okay. It's something to talk about.
I'll share.
Although that's actually.
And, and I think John's got a good grasp of what's going on there. It's, it's what's gonna be workable for him.
How much land do you, does anybody know how much land it roughly is that? 'Cause obviously we should keep the land that's by the, by the, by this, we should keep the land by the springs, obviously.
Oh, yes.
And then we're gonna need the, the land, whatever the heck ends up with our water project, but from the road to the.
The trail.
To the trail.
Which would include, I think, the old house site, 'cause that gives us access onto the trail.
Right.
And if we're putting in the water, we're not through.
And so then, all that. So, John, do you know how many acres, you know how many acres is behind the railroad that we own by chance?
I do not. You can bring it up on the GSI map quick and tell you in like a split second exactly where you are.
Do that matter when it's put down?
'Cause we have to get, we had the copies of the spring there. We had to show Kelly Summit, Mayo Hill and both wells for that water report. And I had to just, we narrowed it down.
Uh, Jake, what is the process as far as?
First up, you would have to declare it as excess property, to declare it surplus. And then it becomes the board's choice. I would recommend doing a private bid, or I'm sorry. You wanna open it up to bid, you decide whether you want the bid to be sealed bid or if you wanna have something closer to an auction.
What is definitely done?
Sealed bid. And you can choose to reject it if you don't like the bid.
But I would think that you would coordinate this between what John's needs are and what the engineers that are working on it. And I don't know, I would say that is, for the long run.
Okay. Can you talk to Jake about that as well? See, now that's, this is a good idea and I think you should run with it in regards to that and see what we can do going forward. And that can be brought in for the builders within, heck, for this year even, if somebody is actually excited.
It's, it's one of them things. I mean, there's, there's land on the other side of the spring lots that won't be filled with.
Okay.
What do we need for it? So.
Is there, uh, anything else?
I'm good.
You're good? Thank you, sir. Alright, Jake, the floor is yours.
Perfect.
Time is perfect.
Everybody, everybody can keep you waiting.
No.
Um, so, is a brief update to the board. Um, at the last meeting I spoke, uh, the village had sent in an application to the funding agency office of community renewal requesting a time extension. That time extension has since been approved, so the village was granted, um, an extension. Um, the deadline for the grant, it had originally been December fifteenth of two thousand, December thirty-first of two thousand fifteen, excuse me. And, uh, the village was granted the extension to December thirty-first of two thousand sixteen. Um, the, by far and away the largest benefit of this time extension that was granted was that we are now able to, um, to tell U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service that we can proceed with tree clearing on the Kelly Summit Spring Site during the winter months when the bats are hibernating and therefore, they basically said it was, had no significant impact on the starting species. You can allow the project to move forward without having to get, um, except, you know, permitting from Fish and Wildlife. So they just write back their biological opinion that there will be an effect because we're able to do this in the winter. Um, so, and with that time extension, we prepared a schedule that outlined how we propose to complete the project, um, in that timeframe of, before next, uh, year for December two thousand sixteen, and to do all the tree clearing over this coming winter. We just moved it out. If we get into the fall here, I think we'll be able to do the tree clearing. I believe, and we've asked for them to clarify, but I believe it's, that'd be between October thirty-first and March first. But it might, might be the fifteenth or something like that.
Our DPW is doing that, correct? We're not hearing that out, there's trees? But they don't.
Yeah, we might recommend that it's, that it's bid out.
Okay.
Depending on, there are some significant trees and they're kind of entwined with the, so to speak, with the springs. But if, if you guys feel that you wanna take a stab at it, I think that there's probably an opportunity to, to address it that way.
Good wood, you can't take my own olive one.
Um, that certainly we can discuss that with you guys and, uh, if, if that's some, something that you wanna pursue, um, we would divide it out that way. Otherwise, you'd probably get some of the same contractor that's gonna ultimately do the work there.
So those skills will provide.